Welcome to the Board of Selectment meeting. Regular agenda, Monday, June 18, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's announcements, special election Tuesday, June 19, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at St. Augustine's Hall. Special town meeting will be on Wednesday, June 27, 2018 at 7:00 PM at the Millville Elementary Auditorium. Item three on the agenda, minutes, June 12, 2018. I've been -- you have corrected copies.
We all have corrected copies. So has everybody had time to go through them?
Yes.
All right. So I'll hear a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the updated minutes for June 12, the 5:00 PM and 5:30 PM meeting.
A second?
Rule.
Aye.
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 Aye. Department of Boards, Department of Memorial Day Parade Committee, perhaps you --
I think both myself and also the Vice Chairwoman. The Memorial Day Parade Committee Chairwoman had asked that we look at dissolving the current participants on the Memorial Day Parade Committee, and also understood that it might not be of the objective for the new people that would come on to necessarily call it a parade committee, but maybe a memorial celebration committee. And I know Jennifer can speak to that as well. So even though we may be dissolving the words Memorial Day Parade Committee, I think it's with the expectation that we'll substitute it with something. So I don't know if I captured that correctly.
Yep.
So I'll hear a motion to dissolve the Memorial Day Parade Committee.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
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 And the intent is to establish a new committee to see what direction they want to, how they are going to move forward in presenting Memorial Day in the future.
Thank you. The Treasurer Collector reports that the FY '18 real estate demands were sent out on June 7 to all delinquent property owners. And item C on the agenda is the Planning Board approved, completed master plan in public hearing on Monday. There'll be a public hearing on Monday, June 25. And that's it. You know what time it is?
7:25 and also 7:30 there. One has to do with the site plan review, and the other with regards to a special permit review for a proposed solar array.
Thank you.
Not in this town.
That would be correct, but it impacts this town. The access to it is from this town.
Public forum.
One to Basset Prospect Street. I'm here to talk to you, Joe, because I got a no trespass letter from the town that you signed. I'd just like to know why, and I would also like to ask that you please remove it immediately.
Cannot do that. We'll consider your request and --
Why did I get a trust, no, no trespass?
It was clearly defined.
No, it wasn't defined.
Mr. Chairman, we already held an executive session that Ms. Basset was made quite aware of in advance with a proper notification. She did not appear at that executive session. I would advise this board not to speak about this issue. Thank you.
That was to --
Mr. Chairman.
That's it?
This is just because I'm voting no tomorrow?
Oh, no.
I don't want to hear it.
Just tell me what I did. This is outrageous, the way you guys are treating people in town.
She'll be removed. If she doesn't remain in order, she can be removed.
Anyone else? Moving on. The Sarvern Consulting.
I'm asking you, Mr. Chairman, you had the National Grid 30-day --
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. 30-day notification of vegetation management rights away. Again, this is that time of year where we do get them. They request that we actually announce them and, you know, post that they are going to be doing that. And as you can see, that work will be continued all the way between now and March 31, 2019. And it is the high tension wire rights away.
And that's pursuant to Commonwealth Massachusetts Regulation, Section 23, National Grid, providing 30-day notification. The, we have, we're receipt of correspondence from Sarvern Consulting Incorporated regarding the availability and summary of Immediate Response Action Status Report for 513 Chesson Hill Road in Millville, and the letters addressed to Mr. Lenny Izzo. He's our health agent, and it reads, "To whom we may concern in accordance with 310 Commonwealth Massachusetts Regulation 40.14033E." This letter is to notify you of the availability of the Immediate Response Action Status Report for the above referenced location. The Immediate Response Action IRA Plan summarizes the activities conducted during the ERA period commencing January 23, 2018 relative to a release of an estimated 10 to 20 gallons of number two home heating oil at the above referenced property. The Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection has assigned release tracking number RTN 2-20438 to the IRA condition. The IRA activities include the excavation of soil and pumping of groundwater during the excavation. Copies of the report can be obtained at the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Central Office in Worcester, Massachusetts. If you have questions, please call the undersigned at the phone number given. Northeast Water Solutions, we have a report of the status of chlorine.
It was sent to the Department of Environmental Protection, and it's not just within normal limits. There was a previous month that there was an error in the submission, so I wanted to let you guys see this because this time we don't have that issue as far as we know. By the, when I say an error in submission, it was by the water testing company, and they corrected that. It was just one of their values was off.
By, in looking at this report, they basically have tested all the chemicals that are added to the water treatment system. New business. I'm going to take up item B, the Vinoco Memorial Playground, and I'm going to ask for a vote to accept a donation from Marty's Fine Wines. I'd like to invite Mr. Swiger to come forward.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Swiger, Jason Swiger, is the district manager and has also been the vice president of Marty's Fine Wines. He and I had had an opportunity to discuss some aspects of his business, and in that discussion, I happened to also be talking about our playground and how we were put in between a rock and a hard place for making it accessible, not only with a 600-foot, five-foot wide pathway to the playground, but also to all the equipment. We were in between a rock and a hard place, and I am really, really excited, and I hope that the board will accept this donation from Marty's Fine Wine then. I would like Mr. Swiger to tell the public audience what kind of donation that will be.
So we're really excited to be in town, you know, having succeeded the Labonte Brothers with Century Discount Liquors. We've loved our interactions with all the folks in town, as well as, you know, the board, and very excited to be able to help out with something especially like this that means so much to the local residents. So just really excited to be able to take part in this.
So I want you to tell them how much you want to donate to this particular project.
So I'm working on getting as much as possible.
But tonight --
We've already made a contribution of $10,000, which I delivered last week and was very happy to do so, and I'm pushing ownership to be even more generous with that.
We thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for having us in town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just, I know the family personally. I grew up with the wife of Joe Vinoco, and I can't, I know that she is so thrilled that that playground is open in his memory, and I just want to thank you.
Absolutely. Again, anything we can do to be in town and then help out, so thanks for having us. And we want to be good residents and good business owners.
Thank you so much.
We greatly appreciate that. I'm sure the children of the town do as well.
Thank you.
Oh, they love it.
That's awesome.
I heard from two personally.
I have young children too, so I know what it means to have, you know, have a space you can go and, you know, and state-of-the-art with this stuff. I mean, it's awesome.
It is.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here tonight, too.
So we just need a vote to accept the donation.
So I'll hear a motion to accept a donation from Marty's Fine Wines. Yeah, from Marty's Fine Wine. And thank Mr. Swiger again. So I'll hear the motion.
I make a motion to accept the donation of $10,000 from Marty's Fine Wines.
Your second.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Jason. In your packets, I also included, since we did have the playground grand opening, I don't know if, Mr. Chairman, you'd like to talk a little bit about that. It was truly a remarkable and wonderful heartfelt day.
It was an exciting event. The, when the youngsters were released to the equipment, they were all over it like, it was just great. And it excited me just to see the enthusiasm and the appreciation from, of the parents and the students at the elementary school. It was a fine afternoon, and I want to thank the town administrator for all the work she did in coordinating all of that, as well as the Providence Fire Department sent an honor guard and included in the ceremony, and it was really a nice afternoon. Next item on the agenda is CMRBC.
Mr. Chairman, we have the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. We have both Eli Goldman and Homi Tran, who are both stars in their own right. They have been working tirelessly with our Open Space Recreation Planning Committee. I know we have the Vice Chairwoman Pam Maloney here, and I know that Tom Mulvey have worked very closely with everybody on the committee, and I know our Vice Chairwoman is part of that and myself. Tonight, we have the culmination of a grant process that started more than a year ago, and I'm really pleased to let both of these folks share with you Millville's first Open Space Recreation Plan and our hopes of submitting this, and we will need some official responsibilities on your part to help make that happen, so we can do that officially with the state before the end of the year. There, now it's all yours.
Thanks, Jen. It's like Jen said, my name's Eli Goldman, and this is Homi Tran. And I believe he just got passed out to you, but it's all there are just the slides I'm going to walk through. It'll be pretty brief, just kind of want to explain what the Open Space Plan is, and we can talk a little bit more if you guys have questions. We do have a few copies of the most recent draft version.
Which we'll leave here.
Which we'll leave, and you guys can read through in more depth and have some more time, but just wanted to give you all kind of a broad overview of kind of what we've been working on with the help of the committee and Jen.
Is it okay if we can maybe turn the lights off? I could maybe turn the bathroom lights on so it won't be so dark? Is everybody okay with that? Yeah, I think so.
A little cyclone.
Yeah.
So kind of what I just said, I guess, we'll give a quick walkthrough of the OSRP, any kind of quick questions you might have. Then we do have a sample letter of support that we can pass around and let you guys read through as well when it comes to that. So there's 11, kind of really nine main sections of the OSRP that runs through a simple plan summary, introduction, walks through a community setting. You're going to read through this list, and that's what the next slides will be, is kind of just digging into each of these sections a little bit more. So the general overview, section one of the plan, really just describes the purpose of the Open Space Plan, which is kind of to catalog and categorize and kind of walk through the different open spaces in town and identify different important open space and recreation areas, really with the overall goal of enhancing quality of life in town, kind of through different ways of improving these spaces and building on them. And also, another big part of it is it opens the door to other future grant programs through the state, once you have this in place. So the introduction of the plan, very similar. It describes some of the planning process and the bits and pieces that went into it. So this will include things like forming the committee. It'll very briefly describe different outreach efforts that were taken by the town, which are described more in depth in later sections. Some of those included multiple surveys that we put out, the Open Space Forum, as well as kind of all the committee meetings as well. So community setting, this is the part of the plan that kind of describes, kind of the base foundation context of the plan. There's a lot of census data, kind of puts the town of Millville in a more regional context, and describes some different housing characteristics, growth and development patterns, as well as prior planning efforts. So you can kind of see some of the data that's included in this. There's a lot of census data, kind of laying the groundwork in this section. From there, it transitions into kind of the environmental side of what's going on in town, so starting kind of generally describing the geology and soils and topography in town, landscape character, and then kind of getting a little bit more gritty-gritty in describing water resources and vegetation, potentially different endangered species that might be in town and should be of worry, as well as kind of describing core habitat and different corridors and things like that that have been mapped. And then describing some scenic and unique environments. This is where some information from the surveys that we put out distributed really came into play, and kind of seeing what items and places and locations in town residents really value and mapping those. And then kind of summing it all up with different environmental challenges. So those are described in the plan, too. Section five kind of describes, it inventories a variety of lands in town that have conservation and recreation interest, and describes the different levels of protection that may or may not be in place. This is done for private and publicly owned parcels. So again, you can kind of see just a quick snapshot of some of the data since section five. Section six is really kind of where it starts to look to the future, so you'll have the goals that are listed out. There are a number of goals included in the plan, and each goal has a number of objectives that are set. These have kind of been worked together over time with the help of the committee a lot. So you can maybe read them, they're kind of small, but they're also, they're included in these handouts, too, and they'll be in the full draft as well. But really, the overall goal is kind of like summed up by that first one essentially, to protect critical parcels of land for conservation and passive recreation. They all feed in and support that. Section seven, I mentioned that we just read multiple surveys. There were two surveys that were done. One was kind of more of a qualitative, open response survey that was sent out, the tax bill, and this received 41 responses, and we had a second, kind of more in-depth, nuanced survey that we put out online. And I guess both of these actually were distributed in hard copy as well, so folks had multiple ways to fill them out. So section seven really just analyzes that survey data and kind of starts to put it into context with sections one through six so far. It also incorporates the community forum that was held here as well in April. And then, like I mentioned, goals and objectives. Again, this kind of, all this section is, is laying out, so if you want to look at the goals and objectives, section eight and nine will really be the two best ways to see them when you're flipping through the plan. Because section nine lays out an action plan, so how are the goals going to be met and the different objectives, and it lays out different kind of responsible parties, so different boards and committees in town that can work together to meet these objectives and eventually meet the goals. And it also sets kind of a timeline and ranks them based on priority level. So for example, maybe one goal we're suggesting be met in years one through three, while maybe some can wait a little bit longer. So that's kind of what is laid out in the action plan. And then in section 10, this is kind of where I mentioned a letter of support. So our agency, CMRBC, will provide a letter of support when this is submitted, as well as hopefully yourselves, the Board of Selectment, and the Planning Board as well. That'll be included in section 10. And there is a section 11, but it's really, it's references and things like that, nothing too exciting. So thanks to everybody who was involved with the process. And if you have more questions, Swami and I can help address them if there's time. If not, we can pass around, oh, no, forgot I included these. So also, we printed out and brought the different maps that are included as well, if you want to look through. They're also up on some slides, too. So here's the, this first map just describes kind of the regional context, places in Millville within the region. Maps two, three, and four describe environmental justice areas in town, which there are not. Map three is the zoning map, and map four, kind of going in with that section four, is describing the environmental side, walks through and visually displays soils in town. Map five is what I mentioned, kind of feeding off using answers from the survey and identifies scenic and unique features in town. So it's kind of small, but those, each of those yellow boxes identify different areas in town. Maps six A and six B describe different water resources in town. Map seven identifies different open space parcels in town and identifies kind of their protection level, whether they're publicly owned or privately owned. Map eight starts to focus more on the goals kind of, and this ties into the action plan and goals and objectives that were set, and identifies kind of areas, visually shows where those are taking place. And then map nine is land use map, so kind of charting out generally different land types and land covers in town. And yeah, that is the last slide.
So we have a memorandum of agreement associated with this?
No, that is, that's something else. We actually have here this letter that's, that's actually going to go to the, the, yeah.
Yes.
Everyone's got one?
Is it in the packet?
No.
No, they brought it. All it is, is to accept the plan on behalf of the town and to vote to submit it to the actual entity, the state entity, which would be the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, and in particular, it usually goes to Melissa Cryan. And so she would be the one to receive it. It goes on file, and once it's on file, then it allows us to access any number of grants that we have been precluded from for years, long before myself being a town administrator, you had to have this on file with the state. So there's been so much detail, and it's really, it doesn't do justice for you both, because I know you've worked so hard on this, and Tom Mulvey and also Pam have worked many, many hours, and all the members of the committee have contributed at different time periods. So it really is, I think, a solid draft that they put together, which, you know, after tonight will, you know, be finalized, and so that's what you have in front of you, Mr. Chairman.
So I'll hear a motion for a vote to approve the plan in state submission.
Second.
Rule.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll leave these hard copy plans for you folks to review and also for members of the community to take a look at. We're going to be opening this up for a public comment up until next week, until the 25th. I think we had set the date for, next Monday. So if there's any input or comment you'd like us to take a closer look at, please feel free to reach out to either of us. We have our contact information with Jen. This will also be posted on our website, online for electronic review, so.
Is there a link from our Millville site to?
Yeah, they have been. Everything else has been linked to them, but they have not put this up until you guys, actually.
Right, but we'll link to it.
Yes, absolutely. And one of the other things is that when the plan is actually submitted, it will include all of the color maps. So the ones that are in a bigger form are ones that will actually get included, they get folded up a specific way, so that the state and anybody else, including the public, can look and see it in detail, so it's not, you know, very tiny.
So they'll be available with town hall?
As well.
All of our content will be handed over to you guys, you can take a look at.
And when we had a forum, we had bigger pictures, you know, at a forum that was attended, you know, in a way to actually garner that kind of input as well. So we have small, we have medium-sized, and we have big ones now, so, okay. Just so everyone knows.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your work and being here, Jen.
Thank you so much.
I will, I'll send you the copy of the signed letter after tomorrow. That's okay.
Next on the agenda are the appointments. We're going to look at the annual and three-year appointments. I'll read the candidates, and I'll go through the entire list, and if there is a comment after I go through the list before we vote.
Okay.
Animal Control Officer Kevin Sullivan, that's a one-year appointment, as well as the following. Assistant Collector Marcia Thero. Blackstone River and Canal Committee Margaret Carroll. Board of Health Agent Leonard Izzo. Building Commissioner Lincoln Barber. Building Commissioner, Lincoln Barber. Cable Access Committee, Colleen Curis, Margaret Carroll, Timothy Labonte, Jesse Duffo. Cable Coordinator, Timothy Labonte. Centennial Commission Commemoration Committee, Margaret Carroll, Jennifer Dean Wing, Keith Wing, Les Davis, Lois Salomi, Catherine Robinson, Karen Vernon, Tina Cook, Ron Landry, Jane Bonin, Pamela Dean Kobetic. Custodian of Tax Possessions, Lisa LaRue. Earth Removal Board, Lincoln Barber, Michelle Dumont, Dustin Ciccarelli, Eric Olson, Thomas Mulvey, Brian Lalau. Electrical Inspector, John Gringa. Electrical Inspector Assistant, Al Jones. Emergency Management Director, Chief Ronald Landry. Emergency Management Department, Benton Phillips, John Hadley, Paul Willett, Adam Batcholder. Enforcement Officer, Loriann Brizer. Ethics Liaison, Diane Lockwood. Flag Warden, Philip Clark. Deputy Flag Warden, Kevin Saret. Green Community Committee, Joseph Reposa, Tricia Benoit Rudden, Keith Boone, Brian Faulkner, Chris Homand. Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee, Thomas Mulvey, Pamela Maloney, Jennifer Dean Wing, Carrie Pisano, John Hadley, Kevin Delgezzi, Jennifer Callahan, Mark Robinson, Karen Vernon, Hilary Carney. Parks and Recreation, Jeff Sutherland, Ronald Landry, Kevin Delgezzi, Karen Vernon, Ryan Delgezzi. Planning Board Associate Member Pamela Maloney. Police Department, William J. Coop Jr., full-time sergeant. Lane Shepard, full-time patrol officer. Scott Gould, full-time patrol officer. Cody Landry, full-time patrol officer. Benjamin Lima, is that a repeat?
Oh.
Full-time patrol officer. James Kuzak, full-time patrol officer.
Part-time.
Part-time, I'm sorry. Thomas Reynolds, part-time patrol officer. Stephen Lacava, part-time patrol officer. Roger Lavalley, part-time patrol officer. Philip Franzin, part-time patrol officer. Town Council, Cooperman and Page. Treasurer Collector, Lisa LaRue. Veterans Agent, Lincoln Barber. That's it for the one-year term. Three-year term through July 30, 2021. Board of Assessors, David Manzello, Adrian Pettit. Board of Register, Patricia Finn. Conservation Commission, Amy Sutherland, Pamela Maloney. Council on Aging, Laurie Legary, Lois Laflamme, Pamela Dean Kobetic. Historical Commission, Margaret Carroll. Zoning Board of Appeals, Tom Mulvey, Thomas Mulvey.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a note that under Emergency Management Department, it's Benton Phelps. You said Phillips, but I just want to make sure for the record that it's?
Benton Phelps.
Phelps.
That the right guy shows up.
The right guy, yeah.
So I hear a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Right here, second.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 It's unanimous, thank you. Now, we do have vacancies. The following positions are currently available. Cable Access Commission, there's one opening, one vacancy. Capital Planning Committee, there are two vacancies, and that's an appointment by the town moderator. Central Massachusetts Planning Commission, one delegate. Conservation, Conservation Commission, one. Council on Aging, three. We'll go to the official warrant for the?
Right, the next item on the agenda is the Animal Control Officer warrant. Per the Commonwealth statutes, each year, every community that has an Animal Control Officer must actually post a warrant for that, and it is something in which it clearly outlines the responsibilities per Mass General Law of what the Animal Control Officer does and how they report to the state and to the town. As you have just appointed Kevin Sullivan, the warrant for the Animal Control Officer is in front of you, and if you have any questions.
Would you like me to read it? What is the responsibility? In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn Kevin Sullivan, Animal Control Officer for the town of Millville, that he is required to proceed forthwith to seek, out, catch, and confine all dogs within said town not duly licensed, collared, or harnessed, and tagged according to the provisions of Chapter 140 of the general laws. And he is further required to make and enter complaint against the owner or keeper of every dog, such dog, and kill or cause to be killed only by the administration of barbiturates in a manner deemed acceptable by the American Veterinary Medical Association Guidelines of Un-ethanization, euthanasia, except by gunshot in case of emergency, each dog which, after being detained for a period of seven days, shall not then have been duly licensed, collared, or harnessed, and tagged, except that any dog not found to be diseased may be made available for adoption. And he shall keep an account of any such adoption and forthwith pay over the money to the town treasurer. Before delivery of any dog so adopted, he shall require the purchaser to show identification and to register and procure a license and tag for such dog from the town clerk of the town where the dog is to be kept, in accordance with the provisions of Section 137 of said chapter 140 of the general laws. Kevin Sullivan, Animal Control Officer, hereof fail not, and make due return of this warrant to the Millville Town Clerk with your dogs, with your doings therein, on or before the first day of October, on or before the first day of January, and on or before the first day of April, and the expiration of your term of office stating the number of dogs caught, confined, and/or killed, or adopted, in the name of the owners or keepers thereof, and whether all unlicensed dogs and cats in said town have been caught, confined, and/or killed, or adopted, in the names of persons against whom complaints have been made under the provisions of said chapter 140, and whether complaints have been made and entered against all persons who have failed to comply with the provisions of said chapter 140. Given under our hands on this day, the 18th of day of June in the year 2018, I'll hear, I'll ask for a motion to sign at the closing meeting of the warrant.
So I make a motion to approve 2018 through 2019 animal control warrant for posting.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah.
I have nothing at this time.
I'll sit.
I have one question. For the override vote next tomorrow, would it be possible to have pens instead of pencils? Because I've heard a lot of concerns about having pencils, so I was wondering if we could, if the town clerk could provide pens instead of pencils.
You don't have to read the?
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about pens or pencils.
Well, I was just wondering, like, if that is possible for it to do?
I can pass it on to the town clerk, I have no idea. I don't want to, you know?
Yeah, I know.
Whoever the warden is for the day.
Okay, I'll pass that on.
I only have one piece of news here for Selectance Forum, and that the Millville Fire Department, the installation of an exhaust vent system, the installation started today, as I understand it. And that allows the fire trucks to get, to actually run within, with the doors closed in the fire station, and the exhaust vented through the system. With that, in winter time, it saves, it saves on the heating bill.
Is that through the Green County?
I was just going to say, that was through a grant, correct?
Yeah, it was through a grant.
Thank you.
Town Administrator's Report.
I'll be brief, Mr. Chairman, I think in your packets you will see the inaugural edition of our Millville on the Move newsletter, which we are going to continue to do on a regular basis and highlight the work of both departments and boards and commissions as we go along, but more about the inner workings of what takes place. We try to highlight those kinds of things here at a meeting, and of course, you know, that's subject to being able to consolidate what really needs action here. So however, there's so many things that go on, on a day-to-day basis, and just trying to capture and highlight. I hope you were able to take a read. I have had a lot of people comment in a very positive way, and so hopefully, like I said, we'll continue to provide it on a regular basis.
This is very nice, excellent, and it shows, actually shows the town, Ashley on the Move.
We've been saying that for a while. You know, there's a lot of good highlights. I do want to congratulate different department heads for pulling together in concise ways. Also, I think just the imagery was important, and, you know, obviously, right before we actually pulled it together, we had the dedication of the playground, so that was a nice piece of it. And people have to remember that even with the playground, with the open space recreation plan, you know, all of these things are tied together, because now that is an area that's been of a priority for open space and recreation. So not only have we, you know, sort of accomplished two goals, we have an open space recreation plan, and now we also have a new place for kids to recreate and families to join. So I think it was a good, a good launch, and hopefully the future additions will be as good. The second item on the agenda is mass development. There's a memorandum of agreement and site concept planning project for 181 Main Street and 8 Central Street. Through this whole discussion about where our town is going, I know that this board is quite aware of many of the steps we've been taking to try to bring economic development into town. Tonight, we had a good example of that, where a business has come to this community after a long-term business had existed, and is looking to continue to work with the town and to expand their business. We have some priority places in town. One of them is obviously the Town Hall site, and the other one is along the river that the town owns, a number of acres. We have this memorandum of agreement on which we're starting to move. There is a consulting firm that the Mass Office for Business Development is going to hire. I will be signing off on this, but I wanted you to see it. It's worth $5,000, that alone, and then the technical assistance panel, there'll be another $5,000. There is no match, that's an outright grant to the town, and if you can look at the scope of services on what they will actually be looking to accomplish, you'll see that. And then the technical, that's for the VHB Consulting Group, and then the technical assistance panel will be done later, at the end of the summer, very beginning of September. But if you look at what the delivers, deliverables will be, it will be, from VHB will be able to look at the two sites, they're going to do the research, they'll actually do the actual site plan proposals for the maximum and best use of those, both of those parcels, and they'll provide that analysis. And so, you know, that'll be good, it will be good because it will help us, if we had to do it on our own, it would be more difficult. And then the whole goal, after the technical assistance panel, is to actually link us with actual developers for both of those, for whatever is the maximum and best use that's determined through the variety of stakeholder analyses and also the research. So that is moving along, and, you know, hopefully we'll be able to do that rather soon. So I am going to sign off on both of those, but I wanted you to see that.
That's great.
So two things.
Yeah, sure.
On page 6, they have our addresses, Whitemsville, they have the right zip, but they just have the wrong town.
Yeah.
I know they use the standard forms, so that would need to be fixed. And some time ago?
Yeah, I haven't done any changes to this yet. I just wanted you to see it. Yeah, great. If you see any others, let me know.
And I know some time ago, CMRBC came in and did a mixed-use recreation, they did for 181. It was a little while ago, I'm not sure if we have it on file, if they have it on file, but it may be something of interest to these people, it might be something that they're looking at that's already been done, might have information in there, I'm not sure. But I think it's worthy of, you know, pulling that up and forwarding it to that, to them, so they have that information also.
Right. There's been that priority development area grant report that's been done, there's also been a report that had been done long before I came here that looked at contamination and on 181, and the lack thereof, and there's been a number of things, a historical grant that also noted some of the area down along 181, including the ball fields and the like. So it will, we'll be using all of that information.
Well, the ball field's not included in that property.
I know, but it's close by, so people always, you know, think about that, so.
Oh, I know they do.
I know you would know that. But, you know, all of those things will get considered. But the major priority for this particular consulting thing is to really look at the maximum best use, and then to try to help line us up for being able to realize that, you know, with both ones.
But I can just remember them giving the presentation, and they had like two or three things, like it could be a mixed-use with recreation, it could be a fully business section, you know, they came with the pictures and like, like they do.
One more second?
I'm trying to remember.
We used it even when we were doing the Mass Works Grant, it was several years before that, so it wasn't too, too long ago.
No.
Because it was done, I want to say, 60, maybe 2014 it was finished?
Yeah, probably about.
Maybe around that time?
About that time.
But we could be a copy of it, maybe, I can, I'll drum it up, so you get a chance to see it, because if you haven't seen it, it was a good, and we've made that reference for a lot of other grants, is looking at the village district as a priority development area. And so that's how we got the demolition grant, because we had already had some work that showed it was important to the town. So, you know, we'll go forward with that, and I'll let you know, they will be coming out and, you know, doing the research piece of it, and then they'll also do some presentation, if you look more closely at the scope of services. So that's that part of it, and the final item on the agenda is the Cannabis Control Commission. I just wanted to update the board that our marijuana bylaw, that our town planner worked very hard on, along with Eli, who? town planner worked very hard on, along with Eli, who presented here earlier this evening, has been accepted by the Attorney General's Office. And now we will start to take steps for implementation. There's another piece of this. It's not an easy, because it's all brand-new legislation and law, and ours has been accepted. But that doesn't mean it's not going to need to require us to go through developing an application and really vetting different proposals. And I will be going through the steps of what that looks like because this board has actually a pretty big role to play going forward. One of the things I did reach out to is the Executive Director of the Cannabis Control Commission, somebody who I actually worked with prior in the State House. He has offered and already had his main community outreach legislative liaison call me. I did express to him that because we're on the border of Rhode Island, that I think that we should get some top priority in terms of assistance, to make sure that what we're putting forward is going to be able to be consistent with what this town would like. And also, they have a number of also already approved licensed holders that may actually be, you know, be of interest to us. And I, I think in the month of July, and even though we have one meeting, we may need to have a separate meeting about this in particular, so that we can get ready for it. And I know that Hillary, our town planner, is already working to look at how other applications have been developed. But I think if we do one workshop on it, I think it would be helpful. So I'm going to make that recommendation and, so that we don't delay on it. And, but at the same time, make sure that we have our ducks in the row, because it's a big step for us to take. And I want to do it right, and I want the town to benefit as much as possible. So your signatures tonight will include the minutes. It'll also include the warrant and your letter, Joe. And then our next Monday meeting will be July 9.
This is exciting.
It is. It's actually great. We have another grant already on dock for us, once it's filed.
You don't have to give me a paper copy.
You should.
Yeah, I'll just read it online.
Read online?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Save a tree.
I appreciate that. I know the trees do, too.
Just three.
Yep, three documents. He just did the four.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Rule.
Aye.
Leading adjourn. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.